Good evening. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Waterloo Community School District Board of Directors to order and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And actually, this is sort of a bittersweet night for us as we will be having two board members leave us and two new board members join us this evening, but I thought perhaps, if I could ask the two of them on the spot, that perhaps Angela and Mike could read the mission statement together tonight. Can you do that? Or you want to divide it up? I should have asked you ahead of time. You're not going to cry on the mission statement, I know. Alright, sweet. I think you guys can handle it.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Well done, you two. Yes. Thank you. The first item on our agenda then this evening is Exhibit A, and this is a new partnership recognition with Irving Elementary, and I'm going to invite Tara Thomas up to give us a little background on this, and I know we've got people from our partners and from Irving both here this evening.
Thank you. Our list of partners in ed continues to grow, or PI as we like to call it with an acronym. Irving already has an extensive list of engaged partners, among them Church Row Historical Neighborhood, The Courier, Wells Fargo. I won't read them all, but we have quite a few here on the list, but the newest one to add is Exchange Club of Waterloo, so I'd like to invite Amy Schmidt, Adrian Carlson, and Zach Zimmerman from Irving's administration up to make the presentation.
Hello, and we are super excited to be here tonight to welcome this new partner in ed for us. Partners at Irving are super important. They not only give of their time at monthly meetings, but they give monetary donations, they donate items such as healthy snacks for Iowa assessments, coats, you name it, we ask and they're there. But the number one thing they give us is their time, and so that's from, again, the meetings, to pen pals, to dropping by just to check in and see how things are going. So we really appreciate our partners. So we're super, super excited to have this new partnership with the Waterloo Exchange Club. And we have Craig Holdman, Michelle T. Meyer, and Jim Aronson here from the Waterloo Exchange Club, if you'd like to come up. We know that the Waterloo Exchange Club consists of many individuals from the community representing many organizations and the community as a whole, so we're really excited to have them onboard, and I was told by Sue that they are hard workers, so we are ready for them to roll their sleeves up and get on our team. Would any of you like to say anything while you're? I love how he ducked that one.
I think Jim has a few words, too.
Well, thank you for inviting us into the partnership at Irving. We really appreciate all the work that the administrators and the staff do there, so we're glad to be able to enhance that. The Exchange Club has been in Waterloo, the Waterloo Exchange Club, since 1848, so we've been here for many, many years. And we really concentrate in three areas: community service, youth outreach, and particularly child abuse prevention, and also Americanism. So we're really well-focused in many areas within our community and are known for many signature programs. We do Police Officer of the Week, Firefighter of the, or Police Officer of the Year, Firefighter of the Year. We also partner with Iowa Show Productions. We own the home show, and so that's our main fundraiser that allows us to do many things within our community. So we're proud to be here. Jim Aronson, Craig Holdman is not a stranger to this table, he was a member of the Board of Directors for many years. Nancy showers could not be here. Dustin Fideka is our president, so he also sends his well wishes as well. Do you like to add anything? Great.
Thank you. Thank you, we're excited to have you onboard. Thank you all very much. Our partners in education certainly contribute so much to the strength of our district and our community, and we really appreciate these partnerships, so I know Irving is really excited to have you all onboard, so. Now I'll let you take your picture. The next item on our agenda then is information from individuals and delegations, and this is an opportunity for those who wish to address the board and come forward. I would ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. Mrs. Arndorfer will hold up a yellow card when you have thirty seconds remaining and a red card when your time has expired, and at that time I will ask that you conclude your public remarks. Please also keep your comments constructive and respectful. We are all here with the goal of trying to help our students. I also ask that you avoid criticizing the job performance of specific employees of the school district. Personnel matters are confidential and must be handled through proper channels, not in this public forum. And finally, we do provide this as an opportunity for comment, but it is generally not a back-and-forth discussion, especially when it comes to items that are not on our agenda, so we will certainly try to clarify with information before or after our meetings, but we do need to proceed with our board meeting agenda items. So with that, I would invite anyone who wishes to address the board to please come forward. Start by stating your name and your home address, and make sure that the microphone is on. Thank you. Is the green light on? There you go.
Good evening. There it is. My name is Dante Means, and I live at 253 Prospect Avenue in Waterloo, Iowa, so I am a Waterloo Ann. I am here as the Chair of the Committee for Youth Leaders in Action, a very prominent conference that has been taking place in the city for roughly about twenty years. The goal of this year's conference that will happen October nineteenth at Allen College is to bring together one hundred student leaders from this area to have some courageous conversations, as well as be involved in a very interactive day that will prove to provide them very necessary leadership skills and strategies, and even a call to action to go out and improve our communities. So it's a way that we can hear youth voices and help our youth. And so I'm here to gain the board's support and just put the word out to the community. We have, we're looking to have ten students from ten high schools. In Waterloo here, we're looking East, West High, and Expo, and so we would love your support in helping us get together ten students and putting the word out that we will be having this conference October nineteenth, which is a Thursday, at Allen College from eight to one-thirty. And registration forms can be picked up actually at Allen College as well. Deana Dowden at Allen College is heading up the registration.
Message to either myself or our Board Secretary, we can make sure we get that to the right people.
Great. We have a couple of board members here, so I will pass that on to Ron.
Dante already have it, so I'll just forward it.
Thank you, Angie.
Just want to make sure we get it. Great, thank you.
And there's no cost, correct Dante?
There is no cost to students. What we are asking from the schools is transportation. We will provide the meals for the students. We have breakfast and lunch prepared.
Anyone else? Alright. Seeing then, we will move on to our first consent agenda. We actually have sort of a two-part meeting tonight, so the first consent agenda consists of items B, C, and D, the minutes of the September eleventh, two thousand seventeen regular board meeting, personnel appointments and adjustments, and bills due and bills paid between board meetings. I'd like to get a motion for those on the table, please?
So moved.
Thanks, and a second. Thanks, Mike. And are there any items that members wish to have removed?
Item C, cat?
Item C.
I don't know what the real Charlie is.
Charlie. That's alright. You can use cat, I like cats, I'll take that. Anything else? Just item C? Alright, then all those in favor of approving the consent agenda items B and D, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item C. And the recommended motion is that, I just have to get to that, sorry.
The Board of Education approve personal items as listed.
Thanks, Angie, and a second?
Second.
And discussion?
I probably shouldn't have moved. Can I move? If I'm gonna, I'm not gonna, I'm just abstaining from voting.
Okay.
Because there's a conflict of interest.
Gotcha. Great. So is there any further discussion then on item C? Alright. Then all those in favor of approval item C, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Angela Weekly abstains. Thank you. That takes us then to the next item on our agenda, which is item E. And this is for allowable growth, and the recommended motion is the Board of Education approve submission of the request to the SBRC for eight hundred sixteen thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars and forty cents in modified allowable growth to provide one hundred percent spending authority for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen actual LEP program costs, and that this increased allowable growth will be funded by two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen cash reserve levies. Thanks, Sue, and a second?
Second.
And discussion? I will turn this over then to Michael Coughlin, our Chief Financial Officer.
Okay, I will outline the financial part, and if you have any questions, I'm sure Charles can address those. And, because I didn't see anybody else here tonight, but on an annual basis, we get waiting for our, I mean, they call it LEP, but I call it ELL, English Second Language, ESL, whatever you want to pick. And then we spend as is needed for the program, which is overseen by Dr. McNulty, but in the funding that we get, it's easier probably to look at page eighteen, and you can see some of the numbers there. We get from our pre-year count, a hundred and forty-eight students times the cost per pupil of nine hundred and eighty-one thousand six sixty-three. Then we also have on line fifteen, when the new year starts and we have more kids come in, we get to apply for that as well, and you usually do that in December, so three hundred and fifty-six, seven oh four. But in the expenditures, there's also the TSS money that goes with the salaries for the ELL, the teacher salary supplement money that comes from the state, it's not ELL money, so that gets taken off of the total. So the total of two million five hundred eleven, four fifty-one, you take off the revenue and the unapplicable TSS expense on line thirteen, and that comes up to the total expense of one million six ninety-four, six fifty-six. So the balance then is the amount that we don't have authority to spend initially, but it is up to every board under local control to then take that difference, which is eight hundred and sixteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty cents, and we can apply to the SBRC for the allowable growth for that. And then that will be covered by, it's for the sixteen-seventeen year, but it will be covered by the cash reserve from eighteen nineteen, because we've already covered seventeen-eighteen, last March and April. So it's kind of a longstanding ordeal to get this all approved, but this is, I think it's the third year that they have made us come to the board primarily just for your knowledge and understanding what's going on. For many years before that, it was just an automatic given by the state that they would give us that allowable growth. So it's not a controversial thing, it's just that they're doing it a little more under full disclosure transparency, so the public and the board knows that amount of money is being submitted to the SBRC, School Budget Review Committee, and we have the ability to get our authorized budget back for that, and we can apply cash reserve money to that as we do taxes in eighteen nineteen, so. Lot of different components that deal with this ELL reimbursement.
So what's the comparative number of students? One forty-eight last year and how many this year?
I don't know how many. We haven't counted this year's number yet. We have, that's part of the official enrollment that will come in about a month, October second is the count day. And then we will, from that point, identify all the ELL kids.
But there must be an implied number in these.
This is all for last year. This is what we spent, overspent in the allowable revenue for ELL. And then what we spend over, we can get the authority back through the SBRC.
And Michael, just for, or Charles, for our viewership and people here, acronyms, ELL, what is that program, and what does it stand for?
That's English Language Learners, and then ESL is English as a Second Language. Right now, in the state of Iowa, English Language Learners is a preferred usage and language. I think to speak to that, the state of Iowa has, I think they would admit it, underfunded ELL services for years, and it's something that Department of Education is aware of. In fact, to the point where the Office of Rights did come into the state Department of Education about three years ago, and effectively approached us with a corrective action plan that started the Department of Education and drove down to our LEAs, school districts. Our approach is that we've taken an aggressive academic and instructional initiative to ensure that our students who are newcomers to our community have the most effective education possible, and yet we are still contributing to the wealth and well-being of the rest of the community. So we have dual immersion program, that started this year. We have what's a closed instruction approach at Highland that is specific and academically rigorous and has great research behind it. We've changed a lot in our ELL services over the last three years. We used to have what I would say a traditional ESL program, and that was teach students in the general classroom until they couldn't understand and then pull out. And we're doing much more immersion, much more of a literacy approach, and I think with the dual immersion pathways that we'll develop, I think we'll see some remarkable gains.
So about how many students do we have?
So there's various levels of services within ELL, so I'm going to give you a number that I know I'm going to come back to you a while, and in a week, and say, wow, I missed it by about a hundred. We typically have about between eight and nine hundred students that receive some type of ELL services. You know, I think English, and here's the remarkable thing about English, outside it being my mother tongue, it is one of the most difficult languages to acquire. There is the oral language can be acquired fairly fast, but the written element and the academic element is five to seven years under what would be considered even some of the better ELL approaches like closed instruction. Dual immersion, on the other hand, can be three to five years, depending on, again, the services and the engagement, but we're very confident of that approach. So I'll be talking to you in a week.
And just for, out of knowledge base here, how many languages do we have in the district?
Well, right now we have, wow, I wish Amy White was here.
I think Tara knows, Tara knows us, I believe, through communications.
Forty-five, but we have, I would say...
About seventy-five dialects.
Seventy dialects, but we have, I would say, two major languages right now, French and Spanish.
Bosnian.
Bosnian, certainly. And then, and a librarian, which is an English derivative.
And if you remember the kindergarten booklets that went out for the first time, I think that was last year, that was the first time we actually published our kindergarten back-to-school book, or welcome-to-school booklets in six languages, so.
So do we have interpreters for every one of those languages?
No, we don't, because it's pretty much impossible. However, we do have access to telecommunication and online services that can provide the translation for all the languages.
We do have for Spanish, Bosnian...
French.
French, Marshallis, Burmese.
Burmese, correct.
I think those are the five, right, the five main ones, and then we have to use either technology or some of the strategies, additional strategies that are applicable across the board, but yes.
Alright. So how do they graduate out of this?
I will provide you the specific numbers, but actually our graduation rate for ELL students is very good. Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, I can talk about the graduation rate, but I will also say that it typically is through a testing process. Elput is the new assessment that the state is using, and it provides feedback for our teachers and our students regarding progress towards English and its proficiency.
So once they test out, then the additional funding goes away?
Yes, but we're still required to maintain contact with those students.
And I believe you, the, I think you get two years of transitional funding once they've tested out as proficient, but a lot, the state only funds for, is it seven years or five years?
It is, five years.
But typically for students, the research would show that it takes at least five years, so a lot of times they will, they're, the funding will expire before, so then we still serve them, we still serve them, we just don't generate.
I think it's been one of our, what, our UN things, or things that we push for is what, more years than?
Yes. Move it to seven from five.
Yeah. And again, we're about funded about a third of what is recommended.
Right.
So that's the gap, is what we're dealing with tonight to go to the board for additional authority.
Because, just because if the student is not proficient yet, if their supplemental funding has expired, we still serve them. We still serve them, so, and the state, the state will fund for five, but a lot of times it takes longer than that.
And also, again, the changes of the law is that we also serve students even when they have tested out of the program. So there's an administrative phone and tracking to ensure students are progressing.
Mike, what does that involve?
Well, that would involve that we have an onsite administrator who's also maintaining contact with students who have succeeded through the program and have tested out, but we're still maintaining and ensuring that they're being successful in school, and that's a requirement at the state level.
So you're watching their grades and so forth?
Yes.
And getting them to the other graduation.
That's right, which I have good numbers on.
I mean, do we have graduation numbers on these?
Yeah, we do, and our numbers have been increasing over the last couple of years, and again, I can provide that for, actually tomorrow morning when I get back to the office.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah, it's great.
Thank you, Michael, thank you, Dr. McNulty. Does anybody else have any questions for them? Alright, then seeing none, all those in favor of approving the allowable cost in excess of revenues, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Then the next item on our agenda is part of our annual meeting, this is our treasurer's report, it is on page, it's item F, it is on page twenty, and that recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the treasurer report for June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, and approve the list of financial institutions as depositories with corresponding maximum amounts in policy seven oh one-one, depository of funds, and place on file the certified annual report two thousand seventeen as required by Iowa Department of Education. Thanks, Mike, and a second, Sue. Great, and discussion, I will turn this over to Michael Coughlin for a presentation.
Okay, on page twenty-one is, and twenty-one, twenty-two are really the same form, one is just an expanded version, and I'm going to look at the, on, on page twenty-two. And I will say that this is the only official time during the year that you approve my financial numbers. Otherwise, it's just for information only, as I rattle on every couple of months, but on page twenty-two, this is a breakdown of all the different funds that we're required to report on, general, student activity, management, the Save Tax Fund, the One Penny, Pebble Fund, debt service, nutrition. So as you look at the top section, lines one through nineteen, those are the different sources of revenue that we have in all the different funds, and on line twenty is the total amount of revenue that came in in each one of those funds, and I'll just highlight the general fund of one hundred and twenty-nine million, six hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six. And then from line twenty-two through thirty-six are the expenditures, or the outgoing of the money. Some of it is transfers between funds, so it's not all expenditures technically in each one of the funds, but on thirty-seven then is the total of the expenditures. So for the general fund, then, corresponding to that is one million, one hundred and twenty-two million, two hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars. So on line thirty-eight is the fund balance of each of these accounts, each of these funds. And those of you that have been on the board know this for the public, and new board members coming on, this is, as we run as a district, a separate set of books for every one of these funds. And they all have different uses, and that will be something fun to learn as they come on, and learn about all these different ways that we account for our finances. But the ending fund balance is not what's in the bank at that on June thirtieth, it's not, doesn't have anything to do with the authority that we have through our budget formula. This is purely just like you had a balance sheet at home. What are your, what was your revenues for the year? How did you spend it? And if you add at the beginning what you carried over from the year before, hopefully you're at a balance in your bank state, in your bank account, then you take the beginning balance, the revenues minus the expenditures gives you an ending balance for each one of these funds, and really the way that we look at it is saying, if the book, if the books were all said and done, all the bills were paid, all the amount of money owed to us had come in, this would be the fund balance at the end. So the fund balance for the general fund is eighteen million, eight ninety-four, three eleven, and you can look across on each one of the funds, and they're all very much in keeping with what... keeping with what we had planned, and the trends are staying at about the same. So I also wanted to just mention, because it was mentioned in the motion, from page twenty-three on is really our Certified Annual Report, the CAR, and it really breaks down all of those numbers. And most of these all correspond to reports that you've seen all year. And I apologize, because I was, I was anticipating being able to refer you to page numbers, and on twenty-three and twenty-four, they're there, and then they're not there on the rest of the pages, so, but I will tell you, just on page twenty-three is a balance sheet, it's your assets and liabilities and your equity. Page twenty-four is the revenues in detail of where they come from and all the different funds. And then the next several pages are all the different funds and their expenditures. And if you look across the top of any of the next couple of pages, you can see up in the top right corner, it'll say what fund it is, and then across the top in the dark, it will show what are its salary benefits, purchase services, supplies, property, miscellaneous, other, and that divides it out, and then down the side is the different programs or functions that we have within the district. So it really is broken down by detail. I was talking to somebody just last week on the phone, and they were asking me about different object codes that you're used to seeing, and well, what is a three twenty-three, and what is six twenty-four, and, and he finally asked me, he said, where did those numbers come from? And I said, well, those are under the state accounting code. Every school district in the state uses the same set of numbers. And the comment was, oh, well, I thought you just made all those up. I said, no, we have a, we have a very strictly watched and guarded method of how we account for how the money is spent. So it's not just money out the door, we have to say exactly what it's spent for, and in many cases, money that we get in can only be spent for certain things, as I've talked about before, special ed and ELL and Title I, and so all of those have very specific account numbers that we have to use. So that gives you a breakdown of that. The last two charts are the miscellaneous income, showing how much is coming from the state, how much is coming from property tax, and then basically, the rest of it is what we call miscellaneous income, and that is money over and above our budget formula, so it's a very important number. But most of those are grants, like Title I and ELL and so on. The last chart is our balance sheet for long-term assets and liabilities, that's where our land and machinery and inventory, and then when we have bonds that we owe, that is part of the liability coverage. So that, in most private businesses, that would be part of the balance sheet. But in school accounting, it is not. It is set, it is held separate, that just our assets and liabilities are held in this program, in this schedule only, and for those that you have seen the audit and listened to the audit presentation, that is always held out separately, away from our revenues and expenditures. Any questions on that before I talk about the policy that we're renewing?
On page twenty-two and, and other pages as well, the debt, the debt service fund, is that the interest and principal to pay back bonds?
It is. Any, any bond that we owe, and all of them that we have right now are one penny sales tax bonds, so it's collected through Fund Thirty-three, and then when we have to pay our bill, it's transferred to the bond, the debt service fund, and then the bond payments are made. That's the major transfer between funds.
So is, is it exclusively?
Yes.
Bonds?
That's all it's for.
Okay.
Is for paying bonds, principal and interest.
Thank you.
On page twenty-four, just to kind of let the public know where revenue comes from, I just wanted to highlight a couple of these things. So from local sources, that would be any, any local property taxes, other fees that local people would pay. Of our total, thirty-eight million is, is local. Eighty-two million, a little over eighty-two million, comes from the state, and about eight and a half million come from federal sources, so, and then a couple of small, smaller items, but the bulk of this is actually state and, and federal money, with, looks like maybe thirty percent of it coming from local. So that.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
And just as an FYI, for those of you who do not have this report in front of you, this is, the Certified Annual Report is done through the Iowa Department of Education, and this is put, placed on file, you can find this for any school district in Iowa, correct, Michael?
Yes.
Right. So if anybody wants to check it out.
It all comes from local money.
Right. Indirectly, it's all from, right, exactly. But for those of you who want to take a deeper delve into it, you may, so.
Yeah, the Depository of Funds, the, the policy that you see on page thirty-seven is just a declaration of the banks, financial institutions that we are using, and the amount of, of maximum account balances that we keep through that. Farmer State Bank is at fifty million dollars. That can be relatively high at times, just when, when payments are made, when property tax comes in, when state aid comes in, when, actually, when we, when we've had bond issues, and that's gone through that bank account, we have to have it high enough to protect it. The School Joint Investment Trust is twenty-five million. This is the vehicle that the state uses to distribute all the money to us. They don't send it to all the different banks, they send it to, actually, it just changed to Wells Fargo this year, so all of us have an account through Wells Fargo in the Joint Investment Trust, and then we distribute our money from there. And then the Bankers' Trust, twenty-five million, is just the transfers of the bond payments. And what we have for the sinking fund, we have that QSCB, that we make payments every year, but it doesn't go back to the investors until it's matured. So that's been building up, it's around fifteen million right now, but that's a bank we use to process our sinking fund and process payments to the bondholders.
So how much do our outgoing board members owe to make this all straight?
Mine to the new board members.
Trying to think of a good answer for that, but I just could not come up with it.
And Michael, the only question I had as far as with our switch in paying for lunches or not in some of our buildings, would that be reflected? I was just looking through on page twenty-two, you know, like the nutrition program sales, nutrition fund was one point two eight million. Would that affect that at all, or where, where would we see, I know it wasn't a very big number as far as eliminating the costs in our buildings, you know, that we had, the free and reduced high numbers.
Well, what's, what that is going to do in that particular case is that number will drop quite a bit, and then we'll get more federal, federal and state reimbursement for those children under the CEP plan.
And will that be timely, or is there a lag?
Yes, it's, it is requested, applied for monthly, so that should, it should maintain our cash flow. And I think just the, I didn't ask specifically, but I saw it in another, actually, an Ask the Courier response, that our participation for breakfast has gone up ten percent in those buildings and sixteen percent in lunch. Does that sound right, Tara? I don't know if she was listening. It was one, one way or the other.
Were we listening?
One, it was, it was ten and sixteen, I think it was breakfast and lunch, in that order, but.
Okay.
So we have seen.
But that's, that's awesome. That's ten percent more kids getting a good breakfast, and sixteen percent more kids getting a better lunch, so, that's super.
Yep.
Any further questions then on the treasurer's report? Michael? All right, then, all those in favor of approving the treasurer's report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thank you, Michael, for that.
I have a couple of things to go through with this, just as they tie to these numbers.
Say, where's the PowerPoint? Come on.
Hey, there's enough there. If I can get the screen to work.
Future board members, this is the most important PowerPoint presentation we get every year, so, this is the one I was talking about in the meetings.
See, I'll have to click, you'll go to green, except I can't get it to go. You wanna? Mine will go.
Can anybody help me from that point? What needs to happen?
Is yours showing on your screen?
Yeah.
Michael, do you have extra copies of this?
I have.
Could we?
Probably some at the end.
Jane, will you hand that down to India and Aster so that they can follow along too? Awesome. Andrew, do you need one? Do you need one? Sure. You want it right now?
Thanks, Charles.
Thanks, Charles. Taking one for the team, I really appreciate it.
Can you guys see the change in the slides?
No.
No, we can't get to green.
We can't even get to the green.
We could. Before he tried to.
Right, it, when we first got here tonight.
It was working.
It was working. But it's not now.
No signal.
Got to be coming.
My experience, if you just click, keep clicking buttons, it's not recording.
Any ideas?
No, it didn't come back.
No.
That's why he was.
You just turn it off.
I know.
Probably can't manage.
It's very wide, say, I'm printing copies tonight, Michael.
Yep. You never know when your technology's not gonna.
Yeah, unless we're back on the computer one.
Computer one, oh, so.
I know.
Computer one. That's the auto setting, we're moving it.
No, I have.
Yeah, if you.
I'll just shut it off when he ducked back.
If you just shut it off.
You weren't going to speak the whole time?
Yeah, shut that off.
Well, it should move pretty quickly.
Yeah.
I'm gonna talk for half an hour.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, because we have to, I think this is part of this treasury report that we have to do, otherwise we tend to get a little, I can ask. Can we do it? Do we?
We can do it just off of paper.
Mm-hmm. Is that all right? And if there's something that we're missing, we can always pick it up again in two weeks?
Okay. Well, I'll just, because I can look at the screen here, and that's fine.
And we can always put this up too, on our website, so that even though we can't see it when it's being videoed. Right. I could hold it up, but I don't think.
What's that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do it. That would only be for there.
Okay.
What are you gonna do?
Swipe left or swipe right.
Well, I could hold this.
I know, that's why I said, you could do this.
It was a lot more colorful on the screen, so it's, it's hard to give it up.
Okay.
Okay, so I just wanted to identify some of the financial indicators that the district is measured on as we look at and compare to other school districts. So some of these things are elementary, but just to kind of go through the whole issue, and I, I just heard a speaker recently that said, the attention span of a person on a particular subject is seven seconds. So we'll try to spend five seconds on each slide. Okay, the school district funds, like I was saying, it's a lot of different funds, and it's broken out, Fund Ten, Fund Twenty-two, Fund Thirty-six, General Management, Physical Plant and Equipment Levy is where we collect taxes, that's part of our tax rate. The Capital Project Save Money is the one penny sales tax that we get. And then Lyle had the question about the capital debt repayment, that's just transfer of money to pay off debt. And then Fund Twenty-one, we have the student activity, and those are all revenues that are generated by student activity, student effort, student run, like athletics and choir and band and all of these different areas that the students may generate their own revenue, and then Fund Sixty-one is the lunch fund. And that operates independently of its own revenue source, its own expenditures, and so on. So when we look at all the numbers that I just laid out, you kind of come to the question of, how do you analyze all of this? What does it really mean? Does it, is it a good sign, or is it not? How do we judge? How do we analyze what we have in front of us? So I just put down, do we do a comparison from year to year? Do we do state averages? Do we compare to our neighboring districts? Do we go to districts of similar size? Do we do special projects within the budget? Do we analyze it compared to our strategic plan? And the answer to all of those is?
Yes.
Yes. We do it in all those different ways, and, and there are more. So as I'm looking through this, trying to give you a summary of where we stand, the School Board Association has set up a table of seven important financial indicators. Certified Enrollment, Unspent Balance Ratio, Annual Unspent Balance, Solvency Ratio, Percentage of Revenue Spent, Salaries and Benefits, and then, what's our new money and how did we settle?
We have green.
Oh, we have green.
I got green.
We have green.
We got it.
Woo-hoo.
You have it, okay. There we go.
There it is.
Oh, it was. There. I'm gonna have to, I don't know if I can control.
You can't control from here.
Okay. Can you advance it?
You want us to move? You can't run that camera, and that it listens to you.
So there's dead space.
How about, can you hear the audio? If you can hear the audio, I think that would be. Michael, do you need us to move, can we see over our heads?
No, you're fine. Okay, so we reviewed the different funds that we have, where the rev, where the revenue sources are coming from, and the different ways to analyze the budget. These are the seven financial indicators that the School Board Association has identified.
Here, Michael. There you go, thank you.
These are the seven financial indicators that the school board, Association of School Boards has identified as financial indicators, as they compare districts, and as districts look at themselves to say, are we within the norms? And if we're not, what, how do we, how do we get there? So I'm not going to read through this whole chart, but I am going to give you Waterloo's position on all of these. Certified Enrollment. These are the seven financial indicators that the school board... Association of School Boards has identified as financial indicators, as they compare districts, and as districts look at themselves to say, "Are we within the norms?" And if we're not, what, how do we... how do we get there? So, uh, I'm not gonna read through this whole chart, but I am going to give you Waterloo's position on all of these. Certified enrollment. What is our goal? To have it stable or growing. And why is that so important? Because it allows us to be a consistent district with our funding, be able to offer, um... Programs that we need without having to make drastic cuts. But, really, what drives the budget... Uh, one of the most important numbers is the enrollment. Because, again, for those of you that follow state, um... You follow city and county government... The way that they, and this is in a very simplistic form, 'cause I'm not an expert in their area, but I know they operate different than we do... That they build a basis of what they believe their expenditures need to be. And they build their budget based on the services that they need to offer. And from that point that they agree on, then they raise the tax rate and other sources of revenue to cover that. So, it's an expenditure-driven budget. A school district budget is absolutely opposite. We take our number of kids, our enrollment, and we take the amount of money that the state gives us per child, and that is the basis of the formula that generates our total revenues. That has to be established first. We're a revenue-driven budget, not an expenditure-driven budget. But, of course, once we find out our revenues, we have to fit our expenditures to meet that. We cannot raise our revenues, because we need to spend more money. We have to fit our expenditures within the revenue guidelines that our formula creates. So, the two major components of that formula to start is our enrollment pl... times the amount of money that the state allocates. And it's about, uh, in the past, in the current year, it's six thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars. So, you can see on here that we've gone up and come down, and, uh, we are working diligently, um... As we speak, and over the next couple of days, to get a good final number. And we will report that once that number is locked in. Um, just as you look at these numbers, they do not include the students that enroll in, because they are not our resident students. They may be sitting in our seats, but they're not from Waterloo. So, they're not counted in that number. For those students that open and roll out, and are going to other districts, they are counted in that number, because they are our students. And we have to transfer money to those districts to pay for those kids.
Just a comment on the slide, uh, recognize that the ordinate is not at zero, so this exaggerates the actual-
It does.
Change. It's much more stable than what you'd see.
Yeah, if we would've had zero to eleven, eleven thousand two hundred, there would've hardly been any change in the... In the height, and that's a very good point from... From that perspective, but it has gone up. I mean, it's basically about a hundred students, uh, a year, up and then down. Unspent authorized budget, from that formula, we are allowed to have so much revenue. It generates a revenue figure. And if we carry, if we don't spend it all, we carry it forward. It may have cash behind it, it may not. Um, we're pretty close to fully funding that right now. We have been, um, struggling with that over the last few years, because even back to two thousand nine, when the governor at that time cut... We didn't cut our authority, what we could spend, it cut the revenue that came to back it up. And it was about ten million dollars for us. So, as we had to build that back up through cash reserve, that's why that number has been building its way up. So, during two thousand thirteen, out of a hundred and, uh... Our total budget is about a hundred and thirty million dollars. You saw that tonight, our revenue was a hundred and twenty-nine million. But then, we have the carryover from the year before. So, we had unspent balance of eight point three million, ten point four, twelve point one, thirteen point two, and at the end of seventeen, we had nineteen point two. Now, from that specific change, there was a lot of action that went behind that. We knew revenue was not coming in. We knew that it may not come... be coming in for several... Several years. So, in the budget process, we were very conservative of saying, "How are we going to protect the district and do what we need to do?" So, there was budget cuts made, but there was also an attitude of being careful with what we did still have to spend. So, a combination of all of those things allowed that ending reserve, uh, ending balance to increase, up to thirteen point six percent of our total budget. That is not out of line with the districts in the upper, um, enrollment figures in the state. I think the average was twelve point six in two thousand thirteen, in two thousand sixteen. So, we are taking that number as we go forward and saying, "How can we best use all of that to deliver the education system that we need?" So, all of that work is going on as we speak, as we go on through eighteen, not expecting much new money for nineteen, and maybe not even for twenty. So, there is a lot of diligent planning that needs to go in to spend that money wisely. Third measurement, the annual unspent authority, saying, "Of the authority that you generate in that particular year," not the cumulative amount, but of what you spent, what you generated in that year, how much did you spend? And you can see in thirteen, we overspent our annual allocation by three and a half percent. But for fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, we were within two percent of the... of the authority that we generated. Well, because we had cuts and careful spending, we've... we underspent our authority by four point nine percent. But as we go forward, we're going to see that flatten out and come back closer to that two percent. The fourth key measurement is the solvency ratio. This is our fund balance, those are those numbers that I was sho... telling you tonight in the Treasurers' report, divided by our revenue, saying, "How healthy is our cash position?" What we just went through was our authority, our formula-driven number. This is based on our cash position, what our solvency is. So, because of cutting back in spending, um, and revenue still coming in, uh, we've gone from two point four to three point nine, to six point two, to eight point six, and last year, we ended up in fourteen point three. The percentage of revenue spent, how much of the... How much expenditures were there compared to the actual revenue we got? Now, authority's not any part of this again. This is just... If you take our total revenue and divide the total expenditures into it, how much did we spend? So, in thirteen, we spent a hundred and four percent of our revenue. We spent more than what we took in. That's why the balance was lower. And then, we spent ninety-eight percent in the next two years, the next three years. Actually, our, um, revenues and expenditures for the last three years have been pretty flat. They haven't changed. It's been almost the exact same amount. So, we have held spending, uh, flat for the last three years, because the revenue was flat for the last three years. Within two percent or just over that. And then, this year, with the... with the cutback on spending, we spent ninety-four of our annual authority. Okay, so, when you're looking at, then, you look at the issue of number six key measurement, the salaries and benefits, saying, "Of your total general fund budget," and everything we've talked about to this point on these charts is just general fund. 'Cause that's the majority of our, uh, budget. It's the main operations of the budget, it's all the salaries and benefits, um... The overhead, the supplies, the books, the computers, and so on. So, of this, there, one of the key measurements is, "How much money of your budget did you spend towards salary and benefits?" Because we are a service-generated business. We hire people. That's where we spend our money. So, that is a measurement to the state, saying, "Are you allocating your expenditures to salary and benefits?" And they're saying, "The target on the state level is seventy-five to eighty-two percent." And we've said that around this table many times, that the majority, eighty percent of our budget, is salary and benefits. So, when you look at this, this plays it out. It was a little lower in two thousand three... thirteen, but from fourteen through seventeen, it's been seventy-eight to seventy-nine percent. Now, I would argue that it's actually higher than that, when you compare it to other districts, because we don't count all of our bus drivers, we don't count all of our nursing, because they are part of a contracted service. We pay somebody else. So, if those salaries of about three and a half million were added into what we're already paying, we'd be at about eighty-two percent. So, we're right in line with what the state target is.
So, if the percentage didn't change, but there was a net savings, it came from, basically, out of the classroom savings. So, what, utilities, uh, busing? Where... where did it... Where did the savings come from?
We just spent less. We spent less in all the areas. When you look across all of the object codes that we have-
Yeah.
-just about every area, we spent less when we did the year before. So, it was across the board.
All right. Thank you.
And the seventh key measurement is, every year, we get new money from the state. Every year, we have to... We have a settlement with, and this is with the Teachers' Association, WEA. This is a measurement for that. And then, it's also, then, um... What was the change in salary and benefits from one year to the next? So, let's just go through the first couple of years, you can kinda see. So, in the first year, in thirteen, even though, and I don't have those enrollment numbers in front of me from comparison, because if we get one percent new money, if we have a higher enrollment than the year before, we get more than one percent. But if our enrollment drops, we get less than one percent, because it's all based on our enrollment number. That's why that's so important. So, in that year of two thousand thirteen, we really only got point three seven of new money. Not even a half of a percent. But in that same year, we settled with the teachers for three point eight six percent. But from the previous year, two thirteen, salary and benefits went up four point six percent. And you'll see, let's just take the next year, and you can see the... You can see the, uh, offset of that. In fourteen, we got two point eight one percent new money. Three point eight two was our settlement with the teachers. But from the year before to the new year, salary and benefits only went one point six six percent. That meant, more than likely, older, experienced teachers left, and we hired new ones on at less... at a less cost. But the salary settlement is always based on who's here in a particular year, and if everybody stayed for the next year. That's how salary settlements are calculated. So, you can have quite a difference. Let's just go to seventeen. We had one percent new money, because we were under the budget guarantee, because our enrollment went down. And we only got one percent. But our salary settlement for a year ago, for seventeen, was three point one eight percent. But because we cut back on staff, the salary total from the previous year actually dropped two point eight percent. It doesn't mean that the teachers got less individually. It means that there was less teachers, or lower pe... tape, lower experienced teachers that came in to replace higher-paid teachers. So, this is just a measurement of saying, "What's happening in your district?" Because there's always the issue of people say, "How can you give away, uh, three and a half percent settlement when you're only getting one percent new money?" Well, there's a lot more that goes into it than that, because more experienced teachers retire, we hire new ones, that offsets some of the costs. Sometimes, you, uh, cut back on some teacher positions, and that lowers the cost from one year to the next. But there's also times that we add teachers. So, when you look at, like, in thirteen, that we settled at three point eight six, but the salaries went up four point six three. Yes, there were teachers that left, and we hired less expensive ones, but there had to be more positions added for that percentage to come out. So, every year, it is not an apples-to-apples comparison. There's three or four variables that come into that. So, when you're looking at a five-year history of what happens, you can kinda go by saying, "How did salary and benefits change?" They went from four point six three to one point six six, to five point five one, to a negative one, to a negative two point eight. So, staff is changing, even if the salary settlements are within the state averages. Now, it's gonna be interesting, in the current year, because of Chapter Twenty, changed the world of collective bargaining. And there were a lot of districts that settled for a very low percentage. One to one and a half percent. When normally, three and a half to four percent was an average settlement from year to year. And in our case, if you look across there, we were doing three and a half to four percent per year in our settlement. And in the year that a lot of districts only gave away one percent, we did two point seven. And it was really three point oh, if you do it the way that we used to calculate settlements. So, even though Chapter Twenty brought in a whole new era, the district's position of settling with the teachers was to keep them relatively the same of what we'd done in the past, because of the value of the school... of the... of the teachers. So, this is... this is just a summary of the seven different measurements that ISB uses to look across the districts in the state and kinda measure how they're doing. So, just looking at the seventeen, eighteen budgets coming up, obviously, a lot of things still have to be set, a lot of things are still known, you're still approving new people being hired. And all of those things have to be put into the actual set of numbers. So, as I look at this, I look at this as a year of change. And we're gonna have focus groups that deal with a lot of things that we used to bargain, and we're gonna have, uh, staff representation open to anybody that wants to share, and you've seen some, uh, emails, Thursday update... Updates on that particular case. There's a lot of other categories under that, those focus groups as well. The other thing is, what I've been telling you about is the Forecast Five program. That as I do this with you, I hope by the next board meeting to have all of my board reports in this format under this new program, which is then going to establish trends from the past five years, and also do it in the current year and five years ahead. Now, that may seem like a lot of time, and it is. But when you look at a district that's spending a hundred and thirty million dollars a year in the general fund, it's very important to know what kind of a effect a decision has on the budget. Not just this year, not just next year, but in the years to come. And what... what we're hearing out of Des Moines, the Department of Education, is that that's on the horizon, that they're going to start requiring five years of forecasting. Because they don't want districts to get in trouble. They don't want districts to not plan soon enough, and they start in the decline. Because that in... where we saw the unspent balance going up every year, and it can go up quickly if you spend in that pattern, but if you overspend, it will drop very quickly. So, it really is an issue of trying to get that flattened out on an annual basis. So, the other part of it, and... and you've heard Charles talk tonight, and all of the Ed Services team, that you've heard different things- and all of the Ed Services team, that you've heard different things on the strategic plan, is the vision on learning. You know, I'm not here to just say, yes or no, you can't spend. It's helping understand how we spend it, and how it's used, and how it affects all of the things that we do. So in my schedule, we're going to be, in September, reviewing again the special funding sources, and that all the budgets match to that. Because when you look at, we talked about local revenue, state revenue, federal revenue tonight, but actually, within that, there's about sixty different special funding sources, that all of them have to be their own set of accounts. So within all of those funds, and in the general fund, we now have sixty different budgets that we have to keep track of. So we're recalculating all of that. October, once we get everybody hired, and we can get everybody in the system, then I can base the budget off of actual. Everything is projected up to this point, but we have people leave, we have people come, we have older teachers going out, we have younger teachers coming in. And in October, when we run that payroll, we can then do a projection based on the actual staffing and what they are getting paid, and then amend the budget to that. So quickly after that, in November and December, we start projecting for eighteen nineteen, and we start this all over again. In, in the meanwhile, while we're watching and trending all of seventeen and eighteen, as we find out what the legislature is going to do for nineteen, different things that they're, they've already changed a couple of things that we can't spend money the same way that we have in the past, so we have to adjust to that, and every year it changes. So we have to monitor all of those things. So that's what's happening when you look at all of those numbers. And I'm going to try to get into a little more not-so-comprehensive explanation in your Thursday updates. Take one little section, and just say, remember, this means this. And hopefully, then some of those pieces, as they grow together, and we get to another budget cycle in March and April, when we have to approve our expenditure and tax level, then there's a little more understanding of all the different pieces that go on. So, and again, anything that comes up that you have questions on, it's always best just to give me a holler, and we can address it, and then share it with everybody else. But there's a lot of things behind all of these numbers. Any questions?
Do we get CEU credits for finance and K-12 education? Tonight, Michael?
I think you should, but I don't decide that.
Just wondering.
I think you can get board, boardmanship points for going to finance.
I was joking, but, but thank you.
Michael, I was just wondering, with having that higher solvency ratio, will that do anything with our bond rating?
Yes, that does help. Actually, the fund balance and the solvency ratio is very important in the strength of our bond. Because they don't know anything about authority. Iowa is a unique group. So.
So that will only help us, yeah.
They really don't care, they want to know what we've got in the bank.
Perfect, so that'll help.
Yep.
And then also, just, just out of curiosity, if we would run like the retirement numbers for our actual teaching staff, would it be, I guess, comparable to say that in looking at these numbers, then that would reflect, like you were saying, you know, potentially losing higher paid staff and hiring, you know, newer paid staff? Would that, would that correlate?
Well, part of it would, could probably be that, but I know in the last two years, we actually cut positions as well. So it's a combination of the two. But there's also, and I know Bev could speak to this if she was here, of when she hires new people, she doesn't hire just the new people, she hires the best person she can get, and they may be at step twelve already. So it's not always a gain in money when you replace staff. And it shouldn't be, it should always try to get the best person.
So I guess it appears to me we're, we've improved the financial situation in the district in the last five years. We're in relatively good shape without increasing tax rates, which we haven't for the last five years. But the big unknown and uncertainty is, given the state situation, it appears as though it's questionable how much, how much additional money we'll get in the future. And that's kind of the reason we need to be pretty, pretty careful on our spending. Is that, is that a fair assumption?
Yeah, it really was the position that when we knew this was, this storm was on the horizon, we attacked it up front, rather than waiting to see what was going to happen. So it's just been that positive way of looking at it, of saying, how do we deal with this now, rather than wait and, and get on a downward trend.
If things do work out to our benefit, then that just gives us a little more to work with in the future as well.
It does.
And this would probably be more for Jane, but how are our enrollment numbers looking?
Yeah, they, they look really stable. We're, we're going to wait till Tuesday to, or I'm sorry, well, Monday is the count date, and so we will know a lot more after that. But they, they look very stable for the year. So I've been tracking kind of in the Cedar Valley what, what's been happening. It looks like most people are, are pretty flat, so. And that's of course a, a big, you know, it's a big part of our budget, so, because we're revenue-driven, so.
I'm glad we got it working. It helps with color. My seven seconds, you know, it's good for me, so.
And just to our new board members, this seems very, very intense and complicated, and you are not expected to know all of this, so.
There's a quiz at the end.
Until next week. No, Michael does a really good job of making budgeting and the budget a little more user-friendly to us non-budgety people.
Thank you, Michael. And I want to just thank our audience, too. I know that's a lot to get through, and that you're actually here for some exciting stuff, like some swearing in of people and all. So I'm going to move our agenda along at this point, and we're going to approve the abstract of votes, because once we get that in the books, then we can switch out our members here. So the recommended motion is the Board of Education take official notice of the abstract of votes from the school election held September twelfth of two thousand seventeen.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
And is there any discussion? You all can see the list of the three candidates and the vote totals here. This is just, and then it was signed by the supervisors and Grant Veder.
The only thing I have to say is just that voter turnout is just, we have to look at, I mean, statewide level of doing something with school elections, because we just, you know, need to get more people involved in the process, so that's my sadness.
Well, in two thousand nineteen, the school board elections will be combined with municipal elections, so it'll all be in November, which I think that was some of the rationale behind the legislature changing that, so, for sure. Alright, anything further then on the abstract? Alright, then all those in favor of the recommended motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Yay to everyone who got elected. The next item on our agenda then is, we will be re-assessing here momentarily, but before we do so, I know we took some time at our last meeting to thank our outgoing board members, Mike Kinsey and Angela Weakley. And so unless anybody else, I, I will certainly allow the rest of our board to talk here, but we do want, I, I just want to say again, on behalf of all of us, how very thankful we are. Don't look at me like that, you're going to make me choke up. How very thankful we are for, for all of the time and effort that you have put into the service for our community, for our district, and most of all, for our kiddos. And so we have a small token for you. We thought that it would be nice for you to have something more than just a plaque, so it's actually a clock. So I'm hoping that you all will recognize the time, and when you look at this, you will think about the time and effort that you put in, but also, we are very thankful for your time and effort as you move forward. I hope you will, neither, none of you will become strangers to us, but we really do very, very, very much appreciate all of your time, talents, and treasures that you've given to the board. So, and you will be missed.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Maybe in the recess, we can take a picture of you, the two members for Tara.
Yeah.
I know she wants to put that out.
You can, you can unwrap your clocks, so.
Yeah, you can take them out, and so we can do them for the pictures at the recess.
Yes. So with that, I'm going to recess the board for just a minute, and then we'll be right back.
Do a mini gavel.
Yeah, do a half gavel, so. So we will pause for a moment. You guys want to come take a picture?
Yeah, and do you guys want to come down here?
Want to come stay right there?
You're not staying right there.
Do you want? I want India and Aster to just come stay right here.
Then you need to as well.
Right, so.
I don't know, I'm going to see what's.
Tara, do you want just the, the outgoing board members?
Just a picture with you and Rhonda, and so.
I'm going to put her, you know how your grandma always sticks her. Yeah, so I'm going to try to stick it live.
Oh, okay.
Uh, no, you're fat.
Yes, she is.
So clearly, in our ticket, let me.
Thank you, Mike, for everything. Feels like we should.
Oh, who do you want?
Picture with just Angie, or can you tell us?
We'll just.
No, no, you won't ask.
Well, sit down here, because then you won't have to sit, and so India would be here.
Okay, so that's what, she's going to know which side.
Okay. Okay, so India will sit down the end, and I will change all of them.
Yeah, well, today, for this time, they can just. Or I just want to be able to.
Yes.
Do you want me to come up there now?
You can just stay down there.
Do they, um, what's your? Do you have to bring it back to order?
Yeah, you'll have to bring it back to order, and then invite them up.
And then we can just do it down here.
Yeah, perfect.
And then just like right down in here, and they'll be here.
Are we all ready?
If I can sit and speak, then.
Oh, that's Jane's seat. I'm not even going to sit down, do I need to? Yeah, I'm going to call us back to order then, and ask India and Aster to please join me down here in the front.
And are you going to read it from here? Nope, they're, they're halfway through, we do the recess, so. Can you come down, right down in here, and?
Yep, she's going to restream it, so.
Look at my height, but this is a.
Yes.
Okay, this is, you guys kind of need to place me a little bit. I think that would be better. Right hand up.
I certainly can, surely.
And then I'll come back up.
We don't do this, but every two years, so we're out of practice. So if you guys want to just kind of come this way, and then we'll get it. No, you're fine, you're fine, you're yard. So this will be the oath of office. Do you solemnly swear?
Let's start over. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Director in the Waterloo Community School District as now or hereafter required by law?
I do. Welcome. Now, are you putting Aster between you guys, is that okay, or do you want to move in, or are you alright?
I'm fine.
Okay, alright, so we'll add Aster right here.
Alright. I'm going to be in the picture again.
That was very exciting, there were a lot of people.
I will, I do, yep.
I didn't know how, how I was supposed to. I said, notice how jaded my family is, I don't want to be here. It's the senior presentation that lasted, she was like, I've never, he's never been to a board meeting. And he was going to come, and then. Oh, yeah, I don't want to be in these.
Photo bombing in the back.
Yeah, I'm trying to get out of it, too.
My, um.
So is that Aster's?
Maybe just trying to, yeah.
I think maybe.
Looks like my mom and grandma.
Just recently got a new did thing from her. I got a Lincoln thing, and I congratulated her, because she got a new job, and she's been, she just recently joined that group, so she may not.
Have a seat.
Here's your seat.
Do I grab my stuff?
But, um.
Yep, bring your stuff up. With you right here. India on the other side, and you're surrounded by some good supporters.
Okay, I wasn't too dumb. And then I'm going to just turn this over to you, right? Because for the election of officers, you have to do that part, too. Okay. I'm getting them to sit somewhere. Welcome, Aster, welcome, India. If you guys have any questions, just lean over to your, you can try to talk to me, but these guys will be, they're good, they're good wing, they're good wingmen. Alright, so while, we're going to move on then tonight, while our boardroom clears, and from this great excitement, welcome, India, welcome, Aster, we're really glad to have you both here at the board table tonight. So the next item on our agenda then is the election of officers. This meeting kind of serves as our annual meeting where we reorganize the board itself. And so I'm going to turn it over to our Board Secretary Pam Arndorfer to walk us through the election of officers.
Yes, yes, so every year, we do have to, or we get to, re-elect officers. These are just nominations, it's single nomination, we do not need a second for that. So first thing is to open the. So, first thing is to open the nominations for the Office of President. Do we have anybody that would like to make a nomination?
I nominate Shanley McNally.
Okay, any others? Okay, so entertain a motion to close the nominations for the Office of President. I have to get used to writing EJ now. Okay, so Shanley McNally has been nominated for the Office of President, although, uh, excuse me, first of all, we have to, uh, close the nominations. So all those in favor of closing the nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Shanley has been nominated as President of the Board of Education. All those in favor of Shanley as serving as President, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And, yes, congratulations Shanley.
I get to keep my chair, yes.
Um, and so now we'll open nominations for the Office of Vice President.
I would like to nominate Sue Flynn.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to close the nominations for the Office of Vice President.
Some move.
And a second? Thank you. Okay, all those in favor of closing the nominations for the Office of Vice President, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sue Flynn has been nominated as Vice President of the Board of Education. All those in favor of Sue Flynn serving as Vice President of the Board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so that closes that, so I will administer the Office to the two of you. Do you want to go down front again, or you want to stand where you are?
Can we, can we just stand right here, is that all right?
Certainly.
Y'all, y'all don't mind out there, do you? No. Yeah, so we're going to move on then, this is item K.
Yeah, may I have a vote?
J.
J, we're still on J.
Oh, gee.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yep. Okay, if you guys want to stand and raise your hand. Okay, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa? And that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of President and Vice President of the Board of Education in the Waterloo Community School District as now or hereafter required by law?
I do.
Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I get to keep the gavel, I'm so excited.
I'm really kidding, yes, now I do get to go on, okay. Um, thank you all, and I think I speak for Sue by saying thank you, we appreciate that vote of confidence. So, now we'll move on to item K, which is, um, the reorganization of the board, and I'm going to turn it back over to our Board Secretary. I get this part? Oh, okay, so I have to do two different motions, is that correct? Okay, so the recommended motion is that the President of the Board of Election of the Waterloo Community School District, Shanley McNally, be authorized to sign all warrants, contracts and other documents that require his, her signature, and the Vice President of the Board of Education of the Waterloo Community School District, Sue Flynn, be authorized to sign all warrants, contracts and other documents that require her signature in the absence of the President, and the signature plate of Shanley McNally, immediate past President of the Board of Education, be authorized to continue as a valid check signature until a plate for the new President, which is me, be obtained and/or the Superintendent be authorized to invest school district monies prior to allocating these funds toward the placement of expenditures in accordance with Board Policy 701.8, and the Board of Education reaffirms all policies and actions of preceding boards. Thanks Sue, and a second? Is there any discussion? All right, you're giving me the checkbook, here we go. So, all those in favor of, uh, the reorganization, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried, thank you very much. Then this takes us to our second, um, consent agenda of the evening, and the items listed on the consent agenda are the substitute para clerical wages, setting the start date for the public hearing for the remodel project at the Waterloo Career Center, the Tri-County Child and Family Development Council Incorporated Contract Service Agreement, the adoption of district-written curriculum for K-5 science, board members' travel, and the appointment of a board member to the UEN Steering Committee. Can I get those items on the table, please?
Some move.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thanks Jessie, and then are there any items that, uh, board members wish to have removed?
Item L, as in Linda.
Item L, okay.
Item M, N, O, please.
M, and O. All right. Anything else? All right, then all those in favor of approving the consent agenda items N and P and Q, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried, that takes us to item L. I have a page number, but.
See fifty-four.
I know, I just had to get it. Yeah, and the recommended motion is, uh, the Board of Education approve the proposed pay increase for substitute para educators and clerical staff.
Some move.
Thanks Jessie, and a second?
Second.
And discussion, Sue Flynn, I know you had some.
Yes, I just, I wanted to draw attention to this, that I just, I, I, I just feel that our paras are critical to the classroom of our kids. So, I'm encouraged by this raise in their salary. I would like it to see more, you know, just, just for value and worth wise, but, um, a dollar seventy-five an hour raise, I'm very happy with. Um, I just know that they play a really important role in the management of the classroom and with helping with the kids and sometimes, um, a super positive role model for each kid. So I just, I, I'm glad to see that we addressed this, I'm glad to see that we were able to increase the hourly rate and, um, I just would hope for more at some point.
And, and just to draw this to attention, this is, this is for substitutes, for the paras, and so we've already approved the, the pay wages for the, the, um, the hired paras that are part of our, uh, full-time staff. But this is, this is for the substitutes, so yes, absolutely.
On any given day, what's the percent of substitutes?
Um, you know, I don't have that number right up of hand, um, you know, we have several hundred paras. So I would say on any given day, you know, and I'm sure it depends, it, I'm sure it depends, but, um, as far as an average number, I would probably have to get back with you on that. I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah, I'd be interested in that, knowing that number.
Yeah, I think, you know, sometimes it might be twenty, you know, twenty, but sometimes it could be, you know, more than that, so.
Well, and I just even think this will increase the pool of people that want to be a substitute para too, you know, because to, if you have a small child or something, to pay a sitter at seven twenty-five, you can't even make that feasible. But nine dollars, it's, it's a little more acceptable, so I really appreciate it.
Particularly those that have maybe been paras.
Right.
And have retired or, for, or whatever reason, resigned.
All right, anything further? All right, then all those in favor of approval of the substitute para clerical wages, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item M, which is on page fifty-six.
I move the Board of Education set the date of October twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, at six PM for the public hearing for the remodeled project, remodel project at Central Middle School. Some move.
Second.
Thank you, and discussion?
Uh, I just thought this is potentially a, a large ticket item and that, uh, it should be pulled out again for a little more attention in case anybody, and just to give the public another opportunity to, to know when this hearing is.
And that'll be our second meeting in October, so, you know, it's not the next meeting that we have, but the one after. So we can also remind people at that next meeting to, wow, good idea.
And Shanley, I might add too, the way that the motion is worded, um, it, it says that it's the remodel project at Central Middle School, but all of the section above it talks about it's the Waterloo Career Center remodel. So just for people that are, are listening, it, it is really the, the, um, the project that we've been talking about for, to expand our, our space for the Waterloo Career Center and the program pathways that are there.
Right. Should we amend the motion then to say, uh, at the Waterloo Career Center instead of at Central Middle?
Located at Central Middle School, I believe.
Located at Central Middle, just the clarification of which building, but the, add the words Waterloo Career Center.
Does she have to do a, is there?
Friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment?
I agree.
Do you agree?
I do, as well.
Do we need to vote on it?
So, so we'll read, for a public hearing, for the Waterloo Career Center remodel project at Central.
At Central Middle School.
Located.
Great, okay, so that's the new motion. Um, then all those in favor of approving that reworded amended motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thank you, then that takes us to item O, which is on page seventy-two, the adoption of the district-written curriculum for K-5 science.
I move the Board of Education approve the adoption, s- district-written curriculum for K-5 science in the amount of ninety-six thousand dollars for fiscal year eighteen and fiscal year nineteen.
And a second? Thanks Aster. And discussion?
I guess it's being funded partly by you and I and partly by internal funds, is that correct? But who is actually writing it?
Angela.
Well, we have Angela here to, to bring that to light.
There we go. Technology. So, the question was who is actually writing the curriculum, it's Waterloo teachers writing the curriculum. We've had partnerships with you and I, a grant partnership since two thousand thirteen through two different grants, and it's always been our teachers who come in the summertime to write the curriculum.
So you and I just contribute funds?
The funds and expertise in helping guide curriculum writing process and alignment with the new Iowa science standards, but it's our teachers putting together the units.
That, that's, that's why I get a little nervous, yeah, to the extent we can, it ought to be our teachers.
Waterloo-driven.
Waterloo-driven is my sensitivity on that one.
And what would you feel is the Waterloo participation in the implementation? I mean, is it, would you say ninety-ten, eighty-twenty?
In terms of the actual writing of the curriculum? Mm-hmm. I mean, I would say it's all teacher-driven, because you and I is just there for guidance in terms of how we put the units together and what it means to really teach science in an authentic, hands-on approach. And it's our teachers driving the needs of our students. So this past summer, for example, we had over fifty teachers attend the curriculum writing workshop and we're doing follow-up throughout the year to put the entire K-one and two science curriculum on the board for this coming year. So we'll be starting that curriculum rollout in two weeks, October second.
And, and how are teachers chosen, can they just sign up or?
Yep, we put out a free call to all teachers who want to be involved in the curriculum writing committee or attend the summer workshops, and it's really based on who has the availability to be involved and who has the interest and passion for writing curriculum. That's a very big task, um, for anyone who's ever attempted that, and so I really appreciate the efforts of our teachers in taking on such a big project.
It looks like about half of it, you know, less than half has already implemented, since fourteen it looks like.
Yeah, I'm.
Right, so some of these things have been implemented? Correct, so, we started implementing some of the units as early as twenty-fourteen at third, fourth and fifth grade. Okay. K-one and two is going to come entirely on board this current year. I see, okay.
And, and the reason for my concern is that, if you look at studies, they show that in terms of pure science and the science methodology and the objectivity, it diminishes as you get into higher education, in other words. The most accurate, most objective is at, or at the school district level. When you get to college, particularly prestigious colleges, it becomes a little more influenced by.
Sure, I recognize your concern, but seriously, our teachers have really taken ownership of the curriculum and made some great suggestions and tweaked it to fit the needs of our kids here.
My trust is in our own teachers, so, thank you.
Great point.
And I just had a question Angela, like in what we have here, that like the third trimester, some of the implementation isn't until eighteen or nineteen for the third and fourth grade level, it looks like in two, like weather and climate systems and waves. So, is, is something similar to that being utilized now, or what's being utilized now?
So, this is all in alignment with the state's implementation plan for the new Iowa science standards. So according to the state's timeline, we have to be in compliance, so to speak, by the end of the eight, end of the eighteen-nineteen school year. So, we took the approach that we would attack one unit per year with third, fourth and fifth grade, because these committees are full-time working teachers and you only have the summer and some off-contract time to work on this type of work. So we wanted to pilot one year and then implement district-wide the following year, to kind of work out any kinks. So that's why you'll see there's one unit left at third, fourth and fifth grade to complete the curriculum for next year.
And how do you feel the pilot program has been, very successful to this point?
It's been very valuable, we found a lot of things that worked well and things that didn't work so well, that teachers were then able to go back the following summer and rewrite in a way that would fit better. And then during our Summer Learning Academy that happens in August, these teachers, our teachers, are leading professional development for their colleagues at that same grade level on teaching that unit. So it's not being led by outside staff, it's our own teachers teaching their peers how to implement that particular curriculum.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? Thanks for staying Angela, we appreciate that. Great. Then all those in favor, uh, of approving the adoption of the district-written curriculum, let's, hi, let's highlight district in that. Uh, district-written curriculum for K-5 science, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to the next item on our agenda, which is Exhibit R, and that is on page seventy-seven. And this is in regards to the Contract Addendum for Guidelines for Behavioral-Focused Teacher. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education accept the contract addendum as presented.
Some move.
Thanks Jessie, and a second?
I'll second.
And discussion?
While you're thinking, would it be okay if I would make a few introductory comments about this?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, um, so this, this contract addendum, um, actually is an opportunity to further show that we, we greatly value our staff. And so as Michael shared a little bit ago, he talked about the fact that in a time when the, um, there were legislative changes to Chapter Twenty that some districts ended up settling lower than what they typically would, and, and we tried to be, uh, you know, um, comparable to what we had, had done in the past, and this is another example, now, you know, with the Chapter Twenty, we didn't, we didn't ask for those changes, but I'm a firm believer that when changes come, it's really our obligation and responsibility to look at what, what we can do differently in light of those changes, and this would be a very good example of a change that we were able to bring, um, you know, that probably will, will benefit our teachers. So with this contract addendum, we, we have some teachers who are teaching students with some behavioral, some, you know, some different, um, different needs. And so because it, the teachers needed to have a particular expertise, they needed to have some additional training, um, we were able to bring this contract addendum to, for, for the teachers and, and of course ultimately for the students in, in high-need areas. Um, these te, these positions, please know, have been historically difficult to fill. Um, and so adding, and I, and I believe it's because not all positions are the same. This is a very, very difficult, uh, position that, that requires some specialized training. And so this contract addendum will actually allow us to, um, it, it's providing flexibility in a contract. Um, some of these things, I want to be very clear, I believe when you are looking at the daily documentation, the collaborative planning, I believe of a, a lot of that actually was being done without the extra, um, the extra supplement. And so, um, this, this, this brings the opportunity for us to compensate the teachers as, as they need to, as they need to be for what they're doing. So it is a, it's a tool, we're considering this contract addendum as a tool to support, um, to support kids, to support our staff, to show that we value them, to sho, to show that we recognize that some positions take something a little bit different. Um, and I think it will actually positively influence the attraction of teachers into these, these positions and hopefully the retention. Um, I actually was interviewed on a, um, um, for a, a newspaper, I think it was, DuPont Register had talked with me about this and, and one of the things that they had asked was, would. Register had talked with me about this. And, and one of the things that they had asked was, would this just be for any new ti, new hires going forward, or would we go back and compensate teachers who have already accepted the positions? And the answer is the latter. We would go back. If, if you're teaching in this district-level behavior position or behavior teaching position, we will compensate them because the work is the same. We don't just add the work for the teachers who would be hired going forward. It would be for all the teachers that are, are doing the job right now. So it's, it's a limited number of teachers. It's not a lot of teachers, but this contract addendum actually is a very good thing for them to, to have opportunity to, to work together, to collaborate, to get involved in professional development. So I, I think it's a very good thing and I would ask that you would support it.
I also just want to note that it is for five years. I mean, there is, because of the fact that it is something that we do value, it's not, we, we are putting some time into that as well.
Yeah, the, we had a lot of conversation about this because it is new, uncharted territory when, you know, we, we haven't really done necessarily this kind of thing for a, a particular position or one single position. And so we had conversations. If a teacher were going to come from a, a traditional general classroom into this position, you know, we wouldn't want them to do that and then, you know, then say, gosh, that, that isn't what I want to continue. I mean, we need stability for the students. I think that's, that's ultra-important. And so that was one of the conversations that we had. Dr. Barney and Ms. Lund are here, Suzie Lund are here, and they were instrumental in, in moving this forward, as was Larry Martin, who was not able to be here this evening. But we had lots of conversations. We talked with the teachers. We actually started out this summer by providing some very specialized instruction for them for multiple days. I attended a portion of that and I think it was extremely well-done. So I know Dr. McNulty has had a very, a very instrumental part in this as well, so I think any of us could answer any of the questions, but I wanted you to have that background of how this contract addendum came to be.
How, how did we arrive at the forty-six dollars an hour rate?
You know, we actually looked at the, the number of hours that we believed it was going to take. We also did some comparisons with some other districts in the state of Iowa and the nation who had done this type of a, of a, of a documentation. There was one particular district that we had, had lots of conversations with, and they had done a study about what, what is the dollar amount that would really attract and retain teachers. And so, you know, to, to do a fifty-dollar stipend or a, a thousand-dollar stipend for a year really was not enough. It was not proven to be enough to, to put somebody, to actually attract somebody into a high-need area. So the, the dollar amount was really, there was a lot of conversation around it. And then we looked at, we kind of maybe did it a little bit backwards, you know, induction and deduction, kind of both going back and forth, looking at the number of hours that we felt it would take, looking at the, the amount of dollars, the, the amount of contract addendum, the six thousand dollars. And, and so we, we kind of went back and forth on that and arrived at it. It really was with a lot of conversation. I don't want to overstep, so does anybody else have, do you have anything else to add to that?
I think it also coincides though with what Dr. Barney and Ms. Lund and Mr. Martin brought in, the new program approach. Because it is, it is more data-focused, it is more, I think, centered on the child and the child's needs. So it is an additive piece to it. And certainly, that stipend is going to be engaged in, in the work process.
And I just want to say how excited I am about this. You know, when, when we're looking at trends and issues in, in K-12 education, parents and teachers and, and, and just the community as a whole have been asking for help to deal with some of the recent trends and issues we're seeing in the classroom, especially as it relates to behavioral intervention. I'm excited about this because when I became a board member, one of the things I said I wanted to, to help change, if you will, were the referral rates.
Yeah.
And so our educators need support and professional development to find alternative ways to help support our students who are dealing with some things. Our guidance counselors need help and are overwhelmed with, with a lot of referrals. Our administrators, our principals, you know, rely on our, our teachers in the classroom to deal with some of these issues. So this is really great. I'm very glad that we're offering these educators this additional support. So.
And Jane, you had mentioned some comparative analysis of wages and stuff. How, how many other, do you know, like districts in the state of Iowa offer something like this for these programs?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I'll, I'll be really transparent, though. The one district that we had a lot of conversation with was Davenport, Iowa. Dr. Barney and Ms. Lund, do you have any other districts in Iowa that are providing this particular type of stipend or, or supplemental pay in Iowa? Davenport was really our primary, wasn't it? Yeah, it really was. Yep. And like I said, you know, I, I think, I, I think this bears repeating. I think when the, the chapter twenty legislation changed, I think there was just this huge fear that, that, that we would not recognize the value of teachers. And I think this exemplifies that we, we very much value staff to the tune of, you know, to, to the point where we were able to supplement with additional dollars for, for their services. And I think that, you know, I think the kids win when our teachers are, are more experienced, more prepared and knowledgeable.
And valued.
And valued. I just, I think it's a really good thing. So this was, I was really happy to see this come before the board tonight. I thi, I think it's a really great thing to, to, to honor them and, and to ultimately serve our kids well.
And I mean, you know, I think it incentivizes for recruitment also.
Of course.
And then also for internal staff that, you know, if you've done a good job, we want to reward that. And I think with the retention in the classroom, that only will help those students in retaining the same teacher and knowing that teacher cares about them and that teacher is with them for more than just one year. So I think it's excellent.
And this, this is out, without regard to lane or seniority, right?
This is an additional supplement on top of what their regular traditional salary is.
But it's the same amount for everybody?
This particular supplement is. This, this supplement is. So if you had two teachers teaching in a similar, I mean, their, their experience and their, their education would, may differentiate what they're being paid as per base wages on our, on our master contract. But this particular thing is not a, a master contract, this is a supplemental, a supplemental contract or something.
So I don't.
Stipend.
So I don't know what the numbers are, but for most of the teachers, it's not simply an extension of hourly rate. It's a little bit above that unless you're very senior and very far in the right lane, then it appears at this hourly rate. I know you didn't look at it this way. This hourly rate would be a little bit less than the average earnings of their regular base. But it's, it's towards the upper end, it would appear, which should encourage new teachers in particular. It's an incentive for them.
For recruitment, yeah.
I think it's a good.
I think we actually showed the, the dollar amount per hour for, for, to, to do a comparison, to share a comparison with you. It really is for the work that needs to be done in this, in this position. But I thi, I think we showed that as a.
And just with that, how then will these specific people be monitored as far as their progress and as far as their capabilities of earning this and staying in this position for the stipend?
Yeah, I know on, on the backside of, on page seventy-eight in your board booklet, I, we actually put together a fre, a list of frequently asked questions because this is a new concept. And so the very last, the last question, Q-six, is how will the district monitor the effectiveness of this contract addendum? And so we, again, we had a lot of dialogue about what, what that would look like. We have special needs coaches who are working alongside these teachers. The answer that we wrote in here, we realized that we will need to be monitoring the effectiveness of this addendum and we will be asking for your feedback along the way. And I think the feedback is for, is for the teaching staff to give, you know, is it, is it the right amount? Is it the amount of hours? What, you know, we, we tried to divvy this out, looking at the amount of time, the daily documentation that's needed, which is, is extremely time-consuming. Collaborative planning meetings, professional development and support meetings. So we'll be asking for feedback from the administrators in the building. We have a, a very strong special needs staff. We have a, the coaches who will be providing feedback on this. So we'll be looking at things like, first of all, you know, the quantity, did we get the numbers right? Second of all, you know, is the professional development working? Can we see evidence of it in the classrooms? Are the students achieving at a higher level? That's the ultimate monitoring. So Dr. McNulty, supplement my answer, please.
I was just going to say exactly what you said, almost verbatim, but no, it's more of a results orientation, right? I mean, it's going to be a sustainability for professionals in the classroom. And, you know, it was mentioned that, that continuity of care and also our students are, are able to engage in, in schooling in a way that they weren't able before. I mean, that's, that's really the marker of, of success in this approach. So it's going to take one or two years, but I, I know that we've already had some, some movement in, in, in results regarding our student performance at the middle school level.
Are you, I was going to say, are you hoping, since you are going to start with a few schools, with the elementary and middle school, do you hope to increase this with other schools or are you just going to maintain this for the next couple of years?
Yeah, right now, the, the, the places where these teachers are located are the only district-level programs that we have. So it would be all district-level behavior programs that we have, which are located in the, in the buildings that are listed here.
Okay.
I think your question is a good one, though, in that would we extend this to other special needs areas or to other service areas? You know, I, I think, I think there's always a possibility, but we're always going to be looking for where the need is. We're also going to be looking for hard-to-fill areas. This was, really, this area was one we knew all along. If we were ever given the opportunity to be able to do this, we, we would do it right away. And so this was, this was the one area. We also, there was a concept of, of starting a little bit smaller instead of doing too much because we want to make sure we get it right. So do you have, Dr. Barney's coming up, so he has something to add? Is the light on?
The big part, Sue asked the question a little bit ago about the PARAs and the BIS supports. We're also looking at expanding this into supporting our businesses that are in these classrooms as well. So that ties into your question earlier about continuing to move that up and support them with hopes that we can begin to be appealing enough to some folks that have some fairly high-level skills. And that may be a way to bring them into the school system to begin to impact some of our kids within the building, knowing that the current rates make it very difficult within that livable wage, as you were talking about earlier.
And just the, I guess, since you're up there, the flexibility of this. So let's say a teacher wants to do it and is quite effective and after three years says, you know what, I have too many responsibilities at home. That, that movement is going to be okay within this?
As, as we have positions available, folks can move into those positions. It's kind of the same way as when, you know, the hopes would be that we'd have folks that would be chomping at the bit to get into the role. But we do know that it's very heavy lifting. And so we will, I think there was part of that conversation earlier about the five-year window. This is really, as Dr. McNulty said, you know, in year one and year two, we're, we're trying to make those adjustments. Hopefully in year three, we'll begin to see the impact. And by year four and five, we'll definitely know if it's the right venture to continue down or if we need to modify and adjust as we go forward.
And I just think it's great for kids because it's only going to help them having, you know, an adult that feels more valued in their room, you know?
And we believe all, I mean, we believe all staff work very, very hard and, and we want to value all staff. But this one, this position or these positions have been traditionally, historically hard to fill. And so other staff, you know, it's, it's not one that people are saying, gosh, I'm gonna, I'm going to instantly go over into this position or ask for a transfer into this position because it, it isn't, it is different and it warrants the, the differential pay.
And historically, we have folks that come into the position very young because it's one of those positions that's still left over, right? And so it's, unfortunately, many of our, many of our least experienced folks move into these roles. So we're hoping to be able to attract some of our more experienced folks into the role, recognizing that they can find a way to continue to have that impact on a greater scale, so.
And I mean, because if you think about it, in the education realm, your teachers coming out of college, how many say, oh, this is my desire to work in this classroom? You know, I mean, it is a harder-filled classroom. Thank you.
Anything further? Great. All right. Then all those in favor of approving the contract addendum, excuse me, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That concludes our action items this evening. And so we'll move on then to our superintendent's report. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Lindman.
Yes, because I'm first, I get to be the first to give a hearty welcome to our two new board members. I am really excited that you're here. I, I know that we have a very extensive and hopefully comprehensive onboarding plan for you to, you don't have to learn it all in a week, but we want to make sure that we are offering to you what you need because it is something different. And Mike can tell you too, that it takes, sometimes it takes a little while to get your land legs. And so, Angie, I'm sorry, Angie, you're hidden behind the.
I know.
I didn't see you. But I, I think both of them could tell you that it does take a little while. And so we hopefully will, will provide for you what you need. But I am, I'm very happy you're here to, to put your name on a ballot and run publicly and not knowing who else is going to run against you and is, is, it takes some courage. And so I applaud your, your decision and we're, we're very, very happy you're here. So, and one final thank you to Mike and Angie. I think they've been fabulous board members. We've kind of done quite a bit of information about them, but I just, we just have to, we can't say it enough because giving every other Monday plus facilities, meetings and, and a variety of things is, is a big deal. So thank you with that. The other thing I had written down is certified enrollment. We will put some information out next week on, on where we are with that. I do want to just take this moment to give accolades to the staff that are working so hard in making sure that we are getting our, our certified enrollment right. I think it seems easy, it almost seems like, you know, counting beans or counting, you know, that you could just count kids and, and everything is, is very quick and easy. It is not. The, there are certain laws and there are certain formulas that require us to really dig into a, a student. There's tuition in, there's tuition out, there's open enrollment, there's preschool, there's special ed preschool, there's homeschool assistance program, and all of those things have their own special nuances. And so we have had many, many meetings, hours worth of preparation and planning to, to get our certified enrollment right. I, I've been in a large district with Waterloo and I've been in a smaller district and it is significantly easier in a smaller district with very little mobility. Waterloo's bigger, it's urban, it has much higher mobility. And so we will be tracking very closely a student who is, you know, moves, who moves in on Friday, we need to know that. A student who moves out on Friday, we need to know that. So great accolades to the, the people who are working on that. Just a couple more fun things in the interest of time. Last week, we had the opportunity to have all of our fourth graders run in the mayor's fun run. I am, I, I'm actually gonna, I ran with them and I, I want that, I want that recognition because it was a big deal for me to run a whole mile. So it was great. I'm not a runner.
Cross-country team?
I do not, I did not do cross-country and it was really quite a, quite a feat for me to do the, the mile. But I did run the whole entire thing and I had a blast. And so it wa, it was a great thing. But we appreciate Mayor Hart doing that event. And, and he is really in much better shape. And so for, matter of fact, sometimes he was actually running backwards and high-fiving kids and I was just trying to struggle to stay afloat. So it was, it was a fun thing to do. And then this one doesn't really seem like it has to do with the, the board, but I'm going to say it anyway. Last week, I had the opportunity to attend the KWWL renovation and their open house. And I was, I was really proud to be there. It was, there was such a positive energy and the reinvestment in Waterloo and specific East Waterloo was really an amazing thing to, to do. If you get a chance to see the building, it's well worth your time. I was, I was proud to be there and to represent the district there. And, and I just offer my congratulations to them. And thank you.
Thanks, Jane. So for both India and Aster, so you guys have been to board meetings, I know, before, but you don't have to say anything tonight. But at the end of the meeting, we always go around and let board members make comments. But I'm not going to put you on the spot first. I'm going to go down to the tried and true Lyle. Let Lyle go. So India, you'll have a little bit of time. Aster, you will too. But anyway, you don't have to make a comment. Sometimes you just say nothing, but just so you guys know what's, what, what we do. So Lyle.
Short and sweet, welcome Aster and India. And one final thanks and goodbye to Angie and Mike.
You're here. Aster, it's your turn. We can go in order, I don't know.
Right, right, right.
Geez, Lyle, you normally set people up a little more.
I sat back for a while. I do want to say that it, I counted it an honor and a privilege to sit on the board with each of you. I do want to publicly thank Mike and Angie, who were gracious enough to meet with me and, and kind of put some of my doubts and fears, kind of helped me along in the process. So I do want to thank them. And India and Shanley, I want to congratulate them also. But India, she has helped me out also along the way. So I'm just glad to be on the board and hopefully I can help make a difference.
You already did.
You know, I know I, I missed my turn, but. You know, I know I, I missed my turn, but I think Aster brought up a very good thing. You know, I think Shanley gets a little bit lost in this election because she's tried and true. And she, but, but I think maybe, you know, we should, we should give a, um, public recognition to Shanley because she ran and then reran. And there's something special about that as well. So, you know, thank you Shanley for doing that. And I apologize for not mentioning that upfront. And thank you Aster for reminding me.
Rhonda?
I just want to say welcome to India and Aster also. So, uh, welcome. And I also wanted to just remind the community that Manny Scott will be here on October third. And so if you get a chance to go to our website to get more info- information about the, um, this phenomenal speaker. So, um, nationally known. And so, um, it's open to the public in the evening.
Five thirty.
So from fi- at five thirty. So for more information, go to our community, uh, school district website. And it's free, correct, to the public?
Supper. There, yeah, there's a light supper.
There you go.
Yeah. All right. Sue, you want, go ahead.
Um, well, I will also welcome India and Aster. It's, it's always good to have new blood, new ideas. So we're looking forward to, um, you speaking up and giving us some new blood. And I do thank my old blood here. I will miss them both, but, um,
The old blood.
The old blood. But, um, it, it, it's always fun to get to know people and, um, to work with them and, and to see their passions. And I've definitely seen that in both of you. So I appreciate that. Next, I went to the east-west game and I just, um, I just want to commend, I sat on east side and I want to commend those students and fans. And, um, I sat right next to the teacher section at east. And it was amazing to see these teachers dressed in the garb and the kids going by and seeing the teachers in a different environment. You know, like, whoa, whoa, there's my teacher, you know? So I thought that was pretty cool. And so shout out to all you east high teachers that were at the game. And there probably were west too, but I stayed to one side. So. And then also I just wanted to, it was quite interesting in the register last week about the, um, new federal act plan of every student succeeds. And I just wondered kind of, um, what your thoughts were on that, Jane.
We just talked about this today, didn't we? The, the, um, for the, the Every Student Succeeds Act is, is what follows the notepad behind. E-S-S-A, ESSA, you'll hear it called. Um, the, the proposal went in from the state department into the, the federal government. And so, um, the, I, I believe that I read that it has, that the, the feds have, um, a hundred twenty days to make their decision. And so, um, the, I think, you know, there was a lot of information. I, I also read that same article and there was some other, um, there was other, other things out on the, on the web today too. Um, from my opinion, I, I believe that it looks like the ESSA has, um, I actually put this in the Thursday update. So I already, I already wrote it out, so I can tell you what it says. Um, the, um, it has a little more flexibility for the, the local control. Um, it is very much, it, it's much more focused on supports versus sanctions. Um, I bu- there, there's a little bit to be re- uh, that remains to be told because Iowa does not have a state test. So that, we'll wait to see how that all plays out. But the good part, I think, is that they, the, this new ESSA has really focused a lot more on a comprehensive look at what schools, uh, ways to measure the schools instead of just measuring them by Iowa assessments, which was extremely heavily weighted in the old way. Um, there was participation that was measured, uh, participation just, hello? Participation meaning, that was really loud. Um, participation meaning the number of students, the percentage of students who took the statewide assessment and then the actual results. Those were the only two measures per se. Graduation rate, a little bit you could argue, but now there's a variety of things. Um, one of the things that I can't, I think they're calling it conditions of learning, is a category in this new ESSA. So if it's approved by the federal, uh, Department of Ed, um, we will be looking at a variety of measures. Not only participation in statewide assessment, not only the test scores, but also the, you know, under the conditions of, of learning, one of the things I saw that they'll actually be surveying students. Um, they'll ask them, you know, some questions. And there were, there were a variety of questions that were actually written in there, but I think it was questions like, you know, um, it, do you have, you know, do you, do you feel like your teachers support you? To what extent do you feel the teachers support you? Um, to, to, have, have you, have you experienced bullying in the last month? Um, questions like that. So, and then they'll be also, uh, surveying teachers, um, and a variety of, so I, I think there's, there's a lot of things that will go into determining whether a school is making progress and to determine their status. So I actually think it's, it's much better. Do I believe that there will be shortcomings and gaps? Absolutely. It's hard to get that legislation right and to get the process right. Um, I know that Dr. McNulty actually served on the, the committee for the state of Iowa. So he, he had his, had an opportunity to represent Waterloo while they were trying to formulate Iowa's version of what are, you know, and is there anything you would add or is that close?
No, I think, I, once again, almost verbatim, um, but I, also I think there's still going to be a focus on, um, the achievement gaps. And a real, I mean, I think that's the thing that I found appealing in ESSA, was that we weren't walking away from responsibility to all students and all, all members of our community. And then there is also the state was required to have a goal. They had submitted prior to this last submission, but they hadn't been in specific goals. And so we had to kind of refocus and have targets. Uh, so I'm looking forward again to see what the federal government has to say regarding our, our submission.
I appreciate that because I was reading it and I thought too, that it, it just, it brought in some new things that I thought would be very effective in the testing and to hopefully, um, reduce the gap. So, thank you.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Sue. Jessie?
I got to get my order back. Now you guys are all.
All right. Well, welcome as well to the board. Thanks for running and representing our community here. Uh, I had three here. Um, not too long, two of them. Uh, Cedar Valley STEM Festival coming up. That was one of my favorites.
Yes. What's the date of that?
It is November seventh. So we're starting work on our, uh, our presentation for deer. So we're excited there. We talked about what season's, well, one season, I've got to see my first as a parent marching band competition. It was very hot, but, uh, this coming weekend though, I, I would like to say the Westside Band is meeting in, uh, two competitions on Saturday. Be performing at two, around two o'clock. Two twenty on Saturday and then again at eight thirty on Saturday night. So, so good luck to them. Been a good show so far, so.
And East High will be too. East High, I think, is at Prairie, but maybe not at five seasons.
Okay. All right. Good. A good chance to come out and see the, all the kids out.
State's next Saturday. It's on my list.
You're at Central.
Yeah, I'm going to get to that.
And then just a, I just want to just, you know, publicly thank our, our special ed teachers and people we have in the district. I know Dr. Barney and Ms. Lund are both gone and, um, I appreciate the effort they do, um, and knowledge they bring in just all the, at, you know, at building levels and stuff. I, I, I just amazed at what they accomplish and what some of the kids are doing and just the amount of energy they put in. And, you know, I think about elementary, particularly elementary special ed teachers and, you know, a lot of times they don't see the, the results of their hard work because, you know, the kids come through and are gone and they don't see what happens afterwards. And just to them, it is appreciated and they are doing some great things. Some of the kids are really succeeding. I think our career tech center is going to butter that as well. And great video on the band manufacturers week as well, so.
Thanks, Jessie.
Uh, thank you. Um, I want to thank you guys for welcoming me here. Um, I want to also want to thank, um, Angie for that first conversation, that coffee that we never had, but we made a run at it and look, we're here. Uh, I also want to acknowledge the community, those who came out and voted, those who just came and supported, uh, myself and Aster. Um, we did a lot of legwork and look, we are here. So thank you very much. Um, as far as, I'm also looking forward to STEM festival, um, due to the fact that I work at the library and working with the Cedar Valley, um, makers. Uh, we'll be there for another third year doing our thing. And I'm really excited to, um, showcase some of the things that we are having at the library and working with the Cedar Valley, um, makers. Um, I'm really excited. That's one of my favorite events. And I'm glad that we really started, um, doing STEM festival. Um, Des Moines has a major one they do every Labor Day weekend and I go down and I'm just in awe. And I'm always in awe when we pull ours off too. So November seventh is huge and I'm always, I was just speaking to a student on Sunday and she's, wants to be a veterinarian. She's fifth grade and she's excited. And I said, have you been to STEM festival? No. And I'm like, oh, you have to go to STEM festival, you know, so they can have that aha moment. So I encourage a lot of people to go to STEM because it's fantastic.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, just real quickly, I do want to say welcome to Aster and welcome to India. I can't wait to get to know you all better. And to Mike and Angie, we're going to miss you. So, and I'm, you know, I'm not taking you out of my cellphone. So. There you go. Um, and I do also just want to say that I appreciate the vote tonight. I appreciate, um, I, I know that I'm kind of a squirrel sometimes up here and I make fun of myself and all that other stuff. But I do take the role of president very seriously. Um, and I do, um, I really do appreciate and I'm honored and humbled to, to do that and to be your fearless leader. And I'm never above, um, you know, take me out if I'm not doing something right or whatever, please. So. Maybe not take me out, but you know what I mean. You can, you can let me know I'm not doing it right. So, anyway, I appreciate that. And then Lyle, I will just double, uh, say that October seventh, the state marching band competition is happening for the northeast Iowa corner, is happening at Central Middle School. And I believe it starts at eight in the morning. Maybe it's at nine and it runs, I think, till three. Um, and so you can come out to the stadium and it's a nominal fee to get in and you can see tons and tons of bands. So both east and west will be there that morning. Right. Exactly. We could use some help parking buses, I'm sure, and all kinds of other stuff. It's a big deal for state. So. Um, anyway, so if you want to see some great bands, um, uh, you can come next Saturday. So, a week from Saturday. So. Is there anything further? All right. Then our next board meeting, um, will be back here then on October ninth. And seeing no further business to come before the board, I would entertain.
East-west volleyball game tomorrow night at West High. So go support the Wahoarks and the Trojans. Should be a good game.
Should be a very good game. Yeah.
Seven o'clock varsity, five o'clock sophomore. JV at five.
Thirty, five thirty.
All right. With that, is there anything further to come before the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Submove.
And a second?
Second.
Jessie, all right, all those in favor? Aye, yes. All right. All right, all those in favor? Aye? We are adjourned. Good night. Thank you.
This right here.
I think so.
Okay.
That's okay. All right.
I don't, I assume we're still going to meet.
Hold you for a second.
Michael.
Sure. Positive.
No, let's go get him. Michael.
If you ever need, like, we throw afternoons all the time.
Okay.
Just, you know, you can email us.
Okay. Thank you. I wear this. Okay. Thank you.
I'll get you and let you go.
Sure.